Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, was posted on the Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
............................................................... First item on the agenda, Resolution twenty-two-three-five, appointing police officers.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Casey Lapeschko, Damian Morone, Christopher Aloha Junior, and Kevin Trans as full-time police officers with the Township of Lacey.
Motion.
Motion.
Do you have a motion?
Move it.
Have a second.
Second.
He's too busy smiling.
On paper.
All in favor?
All right.
Roll call.
Okay, do a roll call.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yeah, you have one accent.
That's an accent, sis.
There you go. Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call up Chief Kenny, so we can go through swearing in the gentlemen and of course giving them some wonderful history of these young men that we're hiring tonight.
Hello, everybody. Inside of yous? Thank you for coming out tonight. This is a very important night, not only for the new hires and their families, but for their fellow officers, for the department, and for the Township of Lacey. Can't happen, none of this can happen without the support of the wonderful committee. We're gracious for them. They're working really hard with us to build this department where it needs to be. They've been great. They support us every step of the way, and I just want to say a little personal thank you very much for everything that you do for us. I want to thank the residents of Lacey Township, I mean, most of us are, and you know, whether we work for a police department or not, we still owe the taxpayers. We have a lot of retirees in the audience, some from our department, some from other departments, and I want to say thank you for coming out, for your support. This is important. The hiring process is important. We have four excellent candidates, they're the new hires now, for our police department. Why is this important? Because we're gonna, we're gonna, this is a twenty-five-year minimum investment. When we hire officers, they're with us for twenty-five years. So I want to tell you that we take this very serious in our selection process, we take our time. All the officers behind you, in one facet or another, they help us out in our hiring process. It's a long process, and we want to give you the best possible candidates and officers for the future. They're gonna be here long after I'm gone, long after the cabin's gone, and a lot of these, you know, fine officers that are here. I want to say a couple things and shout-outs to some unsung heroes. That would be the Detective Bureau. So how this process works, we have ten candidates that they had to do ten backgrounds on. So we have four detectives who had to divvy out backgrounds on four, on the ten officers. It's a lot of work and a short amount of time. They have to carry their caseload while doing that, so they just worked around the clock. It's unlike any other profession, law enforcement. When you do a background, you delve into every intimate detail of somebody's life. I mean, to the point where you have a detective that goes into the house of the person, they're sitting in the living room with their parents, talking. You don't usually get that with any other career. So it's a long process, it's, it's very intense in the amount of work that gets done in that. So I want to thank them, you know, for all that they do. The other unsung heroes, which we'll mention what happens now. So out of our four good candidates that come with great, great backgrounds, three of them are certified officers, one needs to go to the police academy, but on top of that, two have military experience and college as well. So they come with, you know, a good background, they're gonna bring a lot of, of experience, and, you know, I don't want to say diversity, but you know, in a way, we're gonna bring diversity to our department. So what happens now, they get into a field training program. For three months, they get hitched to an officer who now has to invest his or her time with this candidate for, for police officer, and they're with them every step of the way. They're responsible for their success and failures, for their safety. It's a long and tedious and intimate process that lasts through pretty much out their career, because I can attest, anytime something goes wrong, whether it's, you know, four months into this person's career, four years, or fourteen years, it always goes back to, hey, who was this field training officer? So that's, you know, I do want to thank them so much. Sergeant Burway oversees the field training, and you know, thanked him very much for that. Under Lieutenant McKee, that's where these officers are gonna go, under patrol, into the patrol division, so he's gotta oversee everybody. Thank the sergeants for that as well. So what I'd also like to say is, it's, it's a really good career, rewarding, but you need the support of family and friends. So support them. It's, it's stressful, but it's rewarding. I can say, every day, I look forward to coming to work. I've had a great career, and I truly hope that you gentlemen, you know, have the success and the appreciation for the job that I have. And I can tell, you know, the moms, dads, girlfriends, boyfriends, everybody, that they're in good hands. And when you look around at the officers here and the support, they're gonna be in good hands, they're gonna be safe, we're gonna take good care of them, and...
That's pretty much what I have to say.
Without further ado, what I want to do is, I'm gonna introduce an officer, my cabin's gonna introduce an officer, and I'll introduce another, and there's a reason for it, we'll tell you.
You're first.
Yes. Casey Lapeschko, front and center. So Casey, he's twenty-three years old, he was born and raised in Ware Town, lifelong resident there, graduated Southern Regional High School, went to Ocean County College, which he graduated. From there, he worked for the Wildwood Police Department. Wildwood liked him, they sent him to Class Two Academy, he got his Class Two certification, and joined the Lacey Township Police Department as a Class Two officer. From there, he went over to the Ocean County Sheriff's Department, where he started working as investigator, and got his full certification only a few months ago. So he comes to us with all that experience, he was part of us, and now he is back. His mother and father, Dawn and Scott, and his sister Hope, and his longtime girlfriend, Victoria.
Right. Family, side of the microphone. Who's gonna join us up here from your family to hold the mic? You're gonna raise your right and place your left on the Bible.
You on this side?
Right. Just have to repeat after me, I need to put these glasses on, please.
I, Casey Q. Lapeschko...
I, Casey Q. Lapeschko...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully...
Faithfully.
Impartially...
Impartially.
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties...
Of police officer...
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States...
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Are we gonna get family shots before he sits down? Anybody else want to take pictures before he sits down? Why don't we do some family shots of that? Are you on right?
Yes.
Now can we look at you? Let's look at him and take a picture. Take a picture.
Why don't we take it a picture?
Yes. Dr. Sullivan, your next class.
Mr. Morone, front and center. This is where I get to go into my spiel, and, and, you know, a little bit off of what Chief Kenny said, but thank you to the committee for, for tonight. You've been nothing but supportive to us. Our officers absolutely recognize it, they know the work that, that we're all putting in, that you guys are putting in to, to get us where we need to be. And tonight's a, a big step in this process. This process started last year, and we prepared, we were planned for this day, this time last year. So that's when we all sat in front of you and talked about all this. So as far as the support system, and, and I'm gonna get to Damian in a second here, but you just gotta stand there and look awkward. As far as the support system, it's, it's so important, there's a lot of retired people here, there's a lot of families here, there's a lot of officers that worked here, there's a lot of families that are here. This is a very difficult career, right? I mean, everybody can, everybody can attest to that. They need the support of their families. They're going to see things that people shouldn't see, they're going to deal with things that people can't deal with, and they're not going to be able to live a normal life for the next thirty years, twenty-five, thirty years. So do you still want this job? With that, a full, ultimate support of the family is necessary, there's a lot of things you guys can do, and you know, to kind of get involved with, you know, with your loved one, your family member. So I encourage that, to ease the transition. Damian Morone comes to us from Lacey Township, graduated two thousand and fifteen. I got both the two thousand and fifteen guys, so that works out good. He was full-time at the Law and Public Safety Center down in, right now, and he was also one of our police explorers when we actually joined the Police Explorer Program. So Damian was one of my guys when I first, you know, when, when I first took over that program for Lacey. So I've known him since he's been in high school, which is good. Went, after that, went to Ocean County College, then went to Rutgers University, graduated at Rutgers University, started in Surf City as a Class One and Two, and then went to the Ocean County Sheriff's Department as an investigator, and now he's here with Lacey Township. So these guys earned it, Casey absolutely earned it, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, Damian earned it. Casey tried to earn it. Damian earned it, and we're happy to have him.
Who's gonna join us up here? You're gonna raise your right and place your left hand on the Bible. I, Damian J. Morone...
I, Damian J. Morone...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer...
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States...
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. You get pictures?
Christopher Aloha Junior. So the reason why we're piggybacking these, Christopher Aloha's father, me and him are high school classmates and friends. I've known Chris for a long time. It's unbelievable that I'm up here insisting and swearing and signing, I can't believe it. It's unbelievable, so...
Makes you feel old, right?
And Mark always says that, he can't believe, you know, what happened to us.
What happened to us?
Black hair, and here I am.
Black beard, and...
The old guy. So what I know about Chris, graduate of, of Lacey Township High School, did very well with football and volleyball, earns fifty, is it fifty-eight credits from sixty-four? You got full sixty-four?
Never correct.
Sixty-four credits from Ocean County College while attending high school.
Wow.
So he then attended the Stockton College, where he got his degree. From there, he furthered his career and interest by attending the Class One Academy at Ocean County Police Academy. Class Ones don't carry firearms, but he got a job with Tom's River as a booking officer while doing his interview. He learned a lot, we're like, that's a lot of responsibilities for a young man, he's twenty-one years old. Our youngest officer, but we can, we can attest, and I, well, I will attest, that I won the best interviews, very confident, capable, young man. So he will need to attend the police academy, which starts in September. So the other gentlemen are certified, he's going to have to go to the Ocean County Police Academy, he's already passed his physical assessment, we have no doubts, and all the confidence we have in him.
Wonderful. All right, and go on the other side, and I think who's joining us? Mommy, Dad, and Brother, let's go. Raise your right, just repeat after me. It's a little boring here.
Hi, Christopher C. Aloha Junior...
Hi, Christopher C. Aloha Junior...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly...
And justly.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States...
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. Your mom there? Oh my goodness, why didn't she come up? Come on, Mom. That's right, yeah, that's you.
Yeah, that's right, he used to work here, too. It's true. It's true.
We, we do have high expectations for Chris, and please, I mean, not to put any pressure on him, but we, we need awards, we just need, I got one. Shameless club, so, all right, so also, I did forget, Mr. Morone, United States Army National Guard, too, so I do, I do... As, as the chief and I talked about this part, we, we piggybacked off each other, because this one is special to me, right? So, and I say that because of Mr. Trans, I'm actually, come on up here, you can't get out of this, sorry. All right, so Kevin, Kevin's father was a police officer here, my father was a police officer with his father. So Kevin is our fifth legacy member here in our organization. We've had the Peerses come through, Sullivans, Slodas...
Flints.
Flints, and now, now the Transes. So you're never gonna get rid of these names, and continue on down the road. So another, another impressive, impressive interview for Kevin, he, he, he really did such a wonderful job. Graduated Lacey Township High School in two thousand and fifteen, went on to the United States Marine Corps as a machine gunner, and then, after leaving there, he put himself through the police academy. So typically, we as police, as, as a department would sponsor our officers, they get hired, we send them through, there is what's called an alternate route program. So he took it upon himself, paid for himself to go through, finished, you know, at the top of his class in, in a police academy, and there's no doubt that, you know, he's going to excel here and do great, do great here. So again, as a legacy member, you have a lot of responsibility to carry this on for years, right? And don't worry, because I was, I was, I was put in, into a position where everybody thought I was my father, so I had, takes a little while to go through, it's gonna happen to you. You're, and the interesting part of all this, too, is he's going to meet people out there on the road, that, I mean, I, I dealt with it personally, where people are like, they did not like me because they didn't like my father. Or they loved me because they loved my father, and so on and so forth. So I'm confident that everything's gonna work out just fine for you. Good luck, congratulations.
Joining us. Mom, Mom. And your grandmother, you want your grandmother up? They can all come up for me. Grandma? All right, so you're gonna place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right, put these on. I, Kevin T. Trans...
I, Kevin T. Trans...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
Impartially...
Impartially...
And justly...
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police officer...
Perform all the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States...
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state...
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations. Where's his brother? Yeah, um, Cara, get your son, your other son, come up. There's way too many of them. Mayor, I'm turning it back over to you.
Thank you, Mark. Before I, excuse me, before I open this, have the committee members talk about what just happened here, I do want to recognize a former mayor, and that would be Mrs. Lynn Nicky's in, in the audience, and she's after this mayor. Deputy Mayor Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to welcome you all to the Lacey Township Police Department, and I wish you the best of luck, and have long careers, and stay safe, and stay healthy. That's all I have.
Committeewoman Juliana, committeewoman Juliana.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, another proud moment here in Lacey, and aren't we fortunate that all the families could come out and witness this, it's another beautiful day here in Lacey, and you four youngsters, you're the next generation that's gonna take care of us here, so I, I look forward to working with you, I won't be around that long, but I'm just glad you're young and coming in, and that's what we need to do, is bring these, because a lot of these gentlemen, you know, they're getting there, they're twenty-five and thirty, so they're gonna be ready, so you're gonna be taking over, and we look forward to it, and it's just nice to see all the faces out tonight, and congratulations, congratulations to the families, too, that's very important, too, because they work hard to raise these four young men, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Committeewoman Dyckoff.
So I have a question for you four gentlemen.
Oh, boy.
Was this your dream? It was all your dream, and you can tell, you know, I like to tell a story, as, listening to the chief and the, and the captain, and them explaining, this is your life now, and you need the support of your family, but it, it seems like the four of you are, your whole life, you've prepared for this. So I have a, I have a nephew, and he told me, Uncle Mark, I want to be a cop. I said, well, why do you want to be a cop? And he says, well, I want to help people. And I said, Eric, you, you don't have it, you know, you don't have the, you know, the wherewithal and gumption to do it, because you have to be a special kind of person. And I always point this out when we do these swearings in, what really strikes me is the pride in the families as, as a being, as, as their, their children are being sworn in. Damian, your mother, she just sitting there, and the look on her face, but all of you, all of you. And then, and then, as I listen to the, the chief and the captain, some words resonate, investment. And, and, you know, not, not to put it down, but people wonder, well, you know, what do we spend our money on? Why are my taxes going up? Well, because we're investing in the future of Lacey Township. And we sat with these two gentlemen last year, and they presented a plan, and it was a, I was thoroughly impressed with the plan that they presented, and, and, you know, we promised that we would follow through, and I, I'm hoping we're doing what we were supposed to do. And the other word that comes to mind is elite, because you're all elite, and as you all come up, and they talk about your credentials, and your experience, and Marines, and college, and, and it, it boggles my mind, they're getting better and better. So all you older guys have, I, I think you have some good material to work with, and as everyone said, welcome and be safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me just welcome Casey, Damian, Christopher, and Kevin to the finest police force in, in the state of New Jersey. You guys are the future, there's no question about that. When I first moved here in nineteen eighty-five, this was a sleepy little town, exit seventy-four off the parkway. We're now thirty thousand strong, and, yeah, we're gonna have some problems, which you guys are gonna have to handle, but you've got great leadership here. They're gonna train you the right way on how to handle these problems that, that are gonna appear. And as I always say, please keep us safe. Thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna do, take a five-minute recess, moms, dads, everyone can get out of here, then we'll get on with the boring stuff. We gotta get on with our business here.
We gotta, we gotta go home, you can't stay here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not saying a word, I'm just gonna sit here and stare people down, that's easier than what I think.
Can I get someone to close those doors back there? Thank you, gentlemen. All right.
Rory. You're good.
All right, we're back in session here. Bye. You're in a good mood tonight, too, Mr. Dukoff, you're singing. Always singing. Okay, number three on the agenda, special use permit, CBD Wellness Center outdoor pop-up tent sale for August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
The CBD Wellness Center has, they're seeking permission to host a pop-up tent sale in their parking lot. The date is August twenty-six, from ten AM to five PM, and their rain date would be September second. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number five, special use permit, Turn the Town Teal for ovarian cancer, with the September.
Turn the Town Teal is a national campaign to create awareness for ovarian cancer. Veronica had a resident reach out, seeking permission to post teal ribbons with little symptom cards around town to promote awareness in honor of her mother-in-law, who passed away several years ago from ovarian cancer. The ribbons would be up from September first to September thirtieth, and they would be put up and taken down by the resident. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Number five, special use permit, Chapter Two Thrift Boutique Sidewalk Sale.
Chapter Two Thrift Boutique is seeking permission to host sidewalk sales on numerous dates. Their store will be permanently closing later this year, so they're hoping to have these sidewalk sales to get rid of all their inventory. It will take place in their parking lot, and the dates will be September first and second, September fifteenth and sixteenth, October thirteenth and fourteenth, October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, November tenth and eleventh, November seventeenth and eighteenth. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. And number seven, discussion on no-knock ordinance, has been brought to our attention, this is now becoming a much bigger problem now than it has been in the past, and while we do have something on the books at this point in time, it doesn't seem to be working, so we need to do something different.
They're gonna train you the right way on how to handle these problems that are gonna appear. And as I always say, please keep us safe. Thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna do, take a five-minute recess. Moms, dads, everyone can get out of here, then we'll get on with the boring stuff.
Hey, you guys.
We gotta get on with our business here.
We gotta. We gotta go home, you can't stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I am, I'm not saying a word, I'm just gonna sit here and stare people down, that's easier than what I think.
Can I get someone to close those doors back there? Thank you, gentlemen.
Rory. You're good.
Alright, we're back in session here. Bye. You're in good mood tonight, Mr. Dukoff, you're singing.
Always singing.
Okay, number three on the agenda, special use permit CBD Wellness Center Outdoor Pop-Up Tent Sale for August 26, 2023.
The CBD Wellness Center has, they're seeking permission to host a pop-up tent sale in their parking lot. The date is August 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and their rain date would be September 2nd. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Number four, special use permit Turn the Town Teal for ovarian cancer, into September.
Turn the Town Teal is a national campaign to create awareness for ovarian cancer. Veronica had a resident reach out, seeking permission to post teal ribbons with little symptom cards around town to promote awareness in honor of her mother-in-law, who passed away several years ago from ovarian cancer. The ribbons would be up from September 1st to September 30th, and they would be put up and taken down by the resident. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Number five, special use permit Chapter 2 Thrift Boutique Sidewalk Sale.
Chapter 2 Thrift Boutique is seeking permission to host sidewalk sales on numerous dates. Their store will be permanently closing later this year, so they're hoping to have these sidewalk sales to get rid of all their inventory. It will take place in their parking lot, and the dates will be September 1st and 2nd, September 15th and 16th, October 13th and 14th, October 27th and 28th, November 10th and 11th, November 17th and 18th. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Special use permit Popcorn Park Zoo Pet Stock, 923 and 924.
The Popcorn Park Zoo has reached out, looking for permission to host their annual music festival, Pet Stock. It will take place on September 23rd and 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and it is a fundraiser to raise money for the animals and the shelter itself. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. And number seven, discussion on no-knock ordinance, has been brought to our attention. This is now becoming a much bigger problem now than it has been in the past. And while we do have something on the books at this point in time, it doesn't seem to be working, so we need to do something different. Veronica, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, you know, I've been, the police department is the one that gets burdens with this, with regards to, first, the permit to get, the permit for peddling and soliciting from door to door for sales. And then, of course, once that's done, you know, they come around to the communities, they come on to our properties, and they knock on your door. Most of the time, the residents don't want this happening, so it's been a disturbance. However, this past weekend, we've had a company that has come in, they had come to the police department to make application, and it does take some time, because there's background checks done, there's fingerprints that are done, and then there are IDs that are issued for the individuals to solicit door to door. Well, they didn't want to wait. They dumped 28 people from Utah into this town to sell door-to-door pest control. Like, why would we, you know? And it was quite disturbing, the police department got disturbed quite a bit this weekend with it. You know, they've come back to the houses several times, and in today's society, I think it's time that we consider a no-knock ordinance. Berkeley has one, Tom Silver has one, Manchester has one. They do give out stickers that you put on your door if you want to participate in it. If a peddler or solicitor does come in to want to peddle or solicit their goods, you would give them the list of all the people that have opted to have a no-knock. Of course, with Daniel's Law, we have to be careful in how we distribute that list, because you can't utilize names and stuff on there as well, and then those people, you can't go to their door to solicit do-not-knock. I was hoping, and our attorney could possibly ask us, I would like to do where we're automatically all opted into no-knock, and if you want somebody to knock, you have to be on that list. I don't know if that's legal to do it that way, and we posted our community that we're a no-knock community. I don't think I'd have no support from the community for this, but I'm not sure if we're allowed to do that or not.
No, I don't believe you're allowed.
So the, and there would be exempt organizations for this, so this isn't going to cure everything. So your political groups are exempt from that, your nonprofit organizations are exempt from that. So even if it's not a Lacey-based nonprofit, but some Clean Ocean Action or something like that, they would, and all of your religious groups are exempt from that. So they would still be allowed to come and knock. We do ask as a courtesy that they do make notification to the police department and drop off a list of names that they're going around to the community. But this will stop, you know, we get busy with a lot of solar and, you know, those items. So I just wanted to know, before I did a lot of research and I put a lot of effort in, is this something that the committee would like us to consider?
Deputy Mayor Kennis, your thoughts?
No, I think it's a good idea, I said, okay, you know, I think we should consider it.
Committeewoman Juliana.
Same thing, I feel like it's something we definitely have to do.
Committeewoman Dyckoff?
Yes.
So what I'll do is I'll gather some sample ordinances from surrounding communities, and we'll see what we can develop and draft.
Right, alright. Hopefully that'll be for the next meeting, which is in September, I believe.
I could probably get some, something put together by then.
And get a couple sample references.
Yeah, and I'll consult with the police department, because again, they're gonna have the enforcement issue, no matter which way I look at it, to see what would suit our needs the best. I have nothing else to add on to this agenda, does anyone else?
No. Alright, motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, move right into the township meeting. Adequate notice for this meeting has been given in accordance with the Urban Public Mean Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice is advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the district has posted on the bulletin boards showing the time and places of meeting, as you rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence. Please keep our victims, who were fired from last Tuesday, in your prayers. And Committeeman Cortatello, as his mother passed away this week. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First reading of ordinance 2023, amending Chapter 335 to provide above-ground electric fences.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 335, Section 22, entitled Fences and Screens to prohibit above-ground electric fences in residential areas. This is just amending our current regulations within the zoning ordinance to prohibit above-ground electric fences in residential areas.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2023-22, amending Chapter 323 to provide an additional stop-and-yield intersection.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 323 of the Township Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, so as to amend Section 323-28 entitled Stop-and-Yield Intersections, so as to provide for additional stop-and-yield intersections in the Township of Lacey. This is to add a sign at the intersection of Frog Hollow Road and Throck Road. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2023, authorizing the sale of Block, of Block 1.01, Lot 284.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of real property owned by the Township of Lacey, known and designated as Block 1.01, Lot 284, foreign in consideration of $1,500,000. This is for the, the second reading of the sale of Old Community Hall site to Michael DeGeorge.
Yeah, do we open this up to the public? Any comments from the public on this?
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, second reading of ordinance 2023-19, authorizing the sale of Block 226.08, Lot 28.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of Block 226.08, Lot 28, of the municipal tax map to Linda Garberini and Tina Marie Garrati in accordance with provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B and NJSA 48:12-13.2. This is the sale of an undersized easement being sold to both adjoining property owners. Can I have a motion?
Second.
But, open the floor. Open this up to the public, public committee comment on this application?
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
Motion?
Move it. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, second reading of ordinance 2023-20, authorizing the sale of Block 101.12, Lot 56.
Ordinance of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of Block 101.12, Lot 56, of the municipal tax map to Frank Magliola in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48:12-13B and NJSA 48:12-13.2. Second reading, open the floor.
Open this up to the public, the public committee comment this afternoon?
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Resolution 2023-236, adopting the technology risk management standard in compliance with the New Jersey Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund Tier 1.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, adopting the technology risk management standards in compliance with the New Jersey Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund Cyber Risk Management Plans Tier 1 requirements. This is an ordinance that we are adopting, we would enter into this management plan so that if we are ever at risk of a cyber threat, we would have reduced deductibles. Tier 1 includes information backup, security patches and updates, defensive software, password management, email right, email warning, and incident response plan.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-237, adopting the technology risk management standard in compliance with the New Jersey Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Year 2.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, adopting the technology risk management standards in compliance with the New Jersey Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund Cyber Risk Management Plans Tier 2 requirements. Tier 2 includes server security, protection of data, appropriate level of technology support, limiting access privileges, and password policy. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-238, authorizing the township to enter in a cooperative purchasing agreement.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the Township of Lacey to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for the purchase of supplies, materials, goods, and services pursuant to NJSA 48:11. This is just renewing our membership in the ESCNJ Co-op. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-239, amending the contract with Dasty and Associates.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending an agreement with Dasty and Associates for legal services for the Township of Lacey. This is to account for the recent name change in the firm. After Ms. Stager has become partner, they have renamed the firm to Dasty and Stager. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-240, authorizing a change order to a contract with Nick Lex Construction.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending a contract with Nick Lex Construction under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide for a housing rehabilitation program. This is one of our affordable housing rehab projects, we are authorizing a change order. This is for the property located at 10 Murray Grove Lane. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-241, authorize a change order to a contract with Nick Lex Construction.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending a contract with Nick Lex Construction under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program. This is another change order for a co-op rehab unit, and this is for the property located at 506 Oak Hill Court. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-242, authorizing a change order to a contract with Unlimited Builders Construction LLC.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending a contract with Unlimited Builders Construction LLC under the terms and conditions of the Community Development Block Grant to provide a housing rehabilitation program. This is another change order for a rehab unit, and this is for the property located at 927 Center Street. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-243, appoint a part-time clerk for the municipal court.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Christiana Court to the part-time position of clerk for the Township of Lacey. We are appointing a part-time clerk after the retirement of a full-time clerk who had retired earlier this year. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-244, appointing a full-time clerk in the tax collector's office.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Summer Onler to the position of clerk in the tax collector's office for the Township of Lacey. We will be appointing two clerks tonight for the tax collector's office. We do have two upcoming retirements. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-245, appointing a full-time clerk in the tax collector's office.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Nicholas Barlotta to the position of clerk in the tax collector's office for the Township of Lacey. This is that second position in the clerk's office.
Move it. Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-246, appointing a full-time clerk to the Department of Public Works.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Matthew Copack to the position of clerk in the Department of Public Works for the Township of Lacey. This is another appointment for an upcoming retirement. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Resolution 2023-247, authorizing, excuse me, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing an extension to the leave of absence for Richard Tepper. This leave of absence is going to be extended until the end of September. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023-248, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Tyler Walsh. This is extending leave of absence until August 25th. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, resolution 2023-249, authorizing the placement of a lien on Block 148.01, Lot 1.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of property located at 710 Chesapeake Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. We are placing a lien on this property for property maintenance in the amount of $160.60. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Juliana.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes. Resolution 2023 dash 250 authorizing the placement of a lien on block 168 lot 16.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of property located at 1006 Anchor Way, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is a lien in the amount of $183.49 for property maintenance. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mrs. Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, Resolution 2023 dash 251 authorizing the placement of a lien on block 177 lot 5.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of property located at 1401 Edgemere Avenue, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This lien is in the amount of $215.99 for property maintenance. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
This is Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, Resolution 2023 dash 252 authorizing the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department. This is returning, refunding a fee for a resident who decided to not move forward with the project. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
This is Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, Resolution 2023 dash 253 authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
This is Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, Resolution 2023 dash 254 authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. The bills are in the amount of $2,106,855.60. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
This is Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes, monthly, excuse me, monthly reports.
That's me, sorry.
Wake up over there.
For the month of June, the municipal court office collected receipts in the amount of $15,703.41. For the month of July, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts in the amount of $9,667. The building department or Department of Community Development for the month of July collected receipts in the amount of $46,928. And for the month of July, road opening permits were collected in the amount of $2,430. Recycling commodity in the amount of $1,605. And that is all to report. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the township meeting minutes of July 13, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the caucus meeting minutes of July 13, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion to approve raffle licenses for the Ocean County Retired Education Association, Philanthropic Fund, Lacey Soccer Club, contact of Ocean and Mama County Incorporated, Women's Club by the Bay, Women's Club of Lacey, and Lacey High School Booster Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the, oh, you have some add-ons.
I do.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 256. Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2023 taxes due on a property granted the 100% Disabled Veteran Exemption and refund the resulting credit allowance. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
This is Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 dash 257. Resolution of the Township of Lacey, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Corey Mike Simpson as part-time electrical and plumbing subcode official for the Township of Lacey. This is a part-time appointment due to the workload in that department. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
My bad.
Mrs. Giuliana.
Yes.
Mr. Kennis.
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff.
Yes.
Mayor McDonald.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted, again, about the fire, just wanted to thank everybody that responded to the fire last week on Budwood Drive. It was a very trying situation for everybody that was involved. I typically catch up with the chief of police every couple of weeks, and he just wanted to, you know, impart that he was, how impressed he was with the coordinated response and the professionalism of multiple agencies, and just how well everybody worked together. It was a terrible tragedy, and so my heart really goes out to the families. A couple other notes around town. If everybody's been paying attention, Hebrew Park is getting an extension to the walking path. The DPW has been extending the walkway around Hebrew Park, so the walking path won't be used as the main drive aisle. The traffic light at the corner of Haynes and Lake Bernega Drive is moving along rather quickly. The light should roughly be installed around August, no, sorry, August, October. It will, the light will have to remain flashing for 30 days by code, and then should be operable sometime around Thanksgiving. We've begun the process of preparing engineering for multiple dredging projects around township. We usually rotate those about every seven years. And I would say about that time, we always get emails from residents starting to complain about the inlets. They start getting filled with silt, so we started working on that again. Next Monday, we have a, our planning board meeting. This is, and this will be the third month in a row that we have no agenda. I've been on the planning board for 30 years, and I can't remember not having, this has been three months in a row without an agenda. The, you know, the interest rates, I think, are really, are starting to take a bite out of interest rate-sensitive projects, meaning construction and real estate. So we're really seeing a slowdown at that end in the township. And finally, a couple of weeks ago, I had a meeting with Oersted. It's to go over host community benefits, and I'll have more to talk about at a later time. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Committee members, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I first would like to start with the same thing that committee, Deputy Mayor Kennis had to say. Our tragedy in our town, it is amazing what we can do as a township and pull ourselves together and, and the, I'm gonna just keep saying the same word over and over again. We don't know how lucky we are to have the volunteers that we have in this town. If we ever had to pay for firemen or first aid, we would be in trouble. But we have these people who have given their time endlessly to take care of us in that way, and we are very fortunate to have them be a part of this town and work as hard as they do for us. So a big thank you goes out to them always. On a much lighter note, I was at the charity ball for the Elks of, which is a beautiful event. They do it every year. They pick a couple youngsters in our town that could need some help, and they raise funds for them. They raised over $5,000 to give out to these young folks, so it was a beautiful event. And then I went to the food bank. They had a little gathering of, like a reopening kind of thing to just give the residents who might not know about it an opportunity to come in and see what they have there. And so that was very informative. So if anybody needs anything from them, they are there to help. And thank God, more volunteers at the food bank, so thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Committeeman Dykoff.
And of course, just as my fellow committee persons have said, this was a terrible tragedy. As we swore our police officers and we discussed that you'll see things that you don't want to see. And all our first responders, whether they be our police, our firemen, our ambulance, you know, unfortunately, these tragedies and how these things touch us. So as these things happened, and we started to get the news in, I got a text from my daughter saying, oh my God, one of the people I graduated high school with. And so it touches the whole town, and my sincere and our sincere thanks go out to all the first responders for having to endure what you did and for working so hard to try and save these people. Unfortunately, it was for naught because, you know, they perished. I also want to send my sincere condolences to Committeeman Giuliana, I apologize, Kuratolo, whose mother passed this past week. That's why he's not here. He talked lonely about her, and I know he must be hurting, so my condolences. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. I too will start off with the tragedy of last Tuesday. It is a tragedy. And I want to thank our first responders. Just an unbelievable job. And I've always said this, we run out as they run in. So let's think about that for a second. The brave, they're very brave. There's no question about it. Mr. Dykoff said something about, you know, his nephew wasn't built for it. Not everybody's built to be a volunteer fireman or a police officer. It takes a special kind of person. And we were very fortunate in Lacey to have a lot of very special people that do that. So with that, I thank them for that. Speaking about the parks, graffiti is a major issue in our parks. It's anti-Semitic, it's vulgar, and it's against the law. And I have talked to the chief of police about this. If we catch you, we are going to prosecute you to the fullest extent of the law. We will have no sympathy. Doesn't belong in this town. Anybody's welcome to come into this town as long as they want to obey the laws and regulations of this town and live peacefully, no problem. Last month, we had VetWorks here. And they are moving out of that spot down there. That spot was sold. It's part of progress. We, Veronica and I did have a meeting with them with some ideas as to where we can put them. They're coming, gonna try that. We are not turning our back on VetWorks. It's just that, we sold that piece tonight. That gentleman has came in, and I think he said till January, is that what he said, January?
We're not gonna be closing until sometime in January.
Yeah, we're not gonna close VetWorks till sometime in January. We just wanted to let them know so that they can go out and find something. They do fine work. We're not kicking them out. So I just want people to understand that. I don't want that, we throwing them out just because. No, that's not the case at all. And I do have something else on a, on a good note. We got a phone call from the recreation director, Jim Wyland. We had a, hosted a group from Pine Grove Day Camp out in Wall Township, campus over at the Whippet. And they brought a handicapped kid in a wheelchair to the Whippet to participate. And no, they didn't give us a heads up. They just kind of showed up with it. And our lifeguards responded as good people that they are. Not a problem, we'll deal with it. So that, I'm assuming, I'm not sure, it's a young person in that wheelchair. We took him out of the wheelchair, got him over to the Whippet. One of our lifeguards, who was this? I think it was CJ Donahue. Picked him up, carried him across two of the obstacles, and waited to his, to his counselors who were able to catch up to him. And he was able to play on that whippet all day, or for the hour, whatever they booked it for. So that shows you the type of young people that we have, and you can see that in that we hired two police officers from this town tonight. He also goes on to say, this act of kindness should be celebrated. This young person was wheelchair-bound and played in the lake and was able to go on the Whippet with his friends and enjoyed his afternoon. Feel that CJ Donahue, this is from Jim Wyland. I feel that CJ Donahue went above and beyond the duties of a lifeguard to ensure that this child had a smile on his face. On the Whippet was the lifeguard team of Owen Grant, Joyce White, Madison Smith, and CJ Donahue when this took place. If you ever had any of your younger grandchildren or your nephews, nieces, whoever, I haven't had anybody tell me they haven't had a good time on the Whippet, and that our lifeguards are extremely professional about how they handle things. And that is all I have to say tonight. Comments from the public? Steve. State your name for the record, please.
Steve Boral, Forkett River, New Jersey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Committee. First question is, has the committee, council, gone over the engineer's report and made a decision about that?
We have it, yes.
Okay. Are you gonna disclose that to the public?
Did we, did we post that yet, Veronica? Do you have any answer?
The report is posted to the, to the.
Oh, yeah, the report is.
Right, right, right.
At the last meeting, it was agreed that you were gonna put
Right, that puts it out.
the engineer's report on the website so the public could view it.
Right.
Right, so that's been done.
Correct.
I looked real quick. What's the category that I would find that under?
It might be under news, but it also could be under public document, the position on the website. Excuse me. That's where it could be. If you go on the last tab over on the right, there's a, there's an item that says, public documents, and it could be in there.
All right. A question about the engineer's report. If the committee said we're gonna go with that, how would you borrow $35 million?
We'd have to let the bond, the bond. It's the only way we can do it.
And when looking at that engineer's report, I've first learned that the committee wants to quadruple the size of the demissible building. And I want to ask, why would you have to quadruple the size of this building? What would go in there, and what's the purpose?
So, right now, the municipal building is one faction of our department. You have the police department, you have community development. So those three departments alone are over 30,000 square feet. We are looking, again, at the time when we did a feasibility study with all the departments, and the engineers do their numbers, it came out that there could be a need of a 55,000 square foot, square footage for a municipal facility to keep all of us under one roof. Obviously, if we go with the remodeling or the additions, we will do a total of 55,000 square feet between the police department and the municipal building and move community development back over here, who are already growing out of their building over there.
Well.
So we're looking to add on about 25,000 square feet more.
That's not the way I read the report. It looks a lot more than that. And you also want to break the ground, spend $2 million to have that soil removed, which is crazy. Why couldn't you just put a second story on the police department? Or move them to a different building? Why couldn't you put a second story on it? Because once you disturb the ground.
That would be a third story, and the roof and the structures and the footings were not built to put a third story onto that police department.
So you can't do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So when are we, so now are we going back to the new building? Which is, where, which, which angle?
At this point in time, at this point in time, we're waiting for the numbers from Johnson Controls. Then we can sit down, and I have said this from this, we'll have all the facts in front of us, and we will talk about and figure out which way we're going. Mr. Kennis has always indicated here which way he's gonna go. I will tell you this, at 34 million, that doesn't include overruns. And if you know, you were in construction, when you do retro, you're gonna have overruns, you know, 10, 15, 20 percent. So it's gonna get higher. And that doesn't include, if we retro this building, the cost of renting the trailers for probably two years, hardwiring them in, the sewers that we'd have to put in and so forth. I will, I'm gonna go with the new building. I'm gonna tell you that right now. That's where my vote's gonna go.
Well, I'm the spokesperson that opposed
I know you are.
the new building. I'm the spokesperson who represent the township taxpayers that don't even know about this. If you're going through Johnson, that is under the private-public-partnership law. That law requires a lot of town hall meetings, justification. You gotta justify, in order to put that building up, that it's gonna benefit us all.
Yep.
So let me hear it now. How is raising our taxes for the next 30 years? Because every time you put, right now, they just went up 5 percent, right?
Five cents, yes.
Okay. Why'd they go up 5 percent?
Well, first of all, we had.
I'm asking. I know why. I wanna know, I wanna hear, can I, I'm speaking with the mayor. Excuse me.
We had a huge health increase for our employees.
Right.
Huge health increase.
Okay.
The salaries go up. It's part of, it's part of it.
Okay, so you were able to go above the 2 percent?
No, we stayed within the 2 percent. The 2 percent, we have certain items that are inside the 2 percent. There are certain items outside the 2 percent.
That's not what they told me at the tax office. I went down there, my taxes went up, I believe, more than 2 percent, based on the numbers that they gave me. What is the percentage that the taxes just went up?
August 1st.
The percentage for the next year?
I don't have that off the top of my head. The 2 percent is not what you can raise the taxes by. The 2 percent law is about what you raise the budget, line items in the budget. It has not, it's not related to taxes. So that 2 percent is not that the towns or the schools or the counties can only raise your taxes by 2 percent.
Essentially, the 2 percent is on operating
Yes.
revenue.
Yes.
Well, from what I heard from you in the past, you wanted to go under the 2 percent so you don't have to put this new municipal complex up for a voting referendum, deceive us taxpayers, and there's a lot of them that live week to week that don't have the money, excuse me, I'm not done yet, that don't have the money to pay for it. Gasoline's four bucks a gallon. I even heard from up here about the interest rates. This is the wrong time to do it. I think that it is, it is, stinks with extravagance. It's been doing, been done, been contemplated on a very quiet, almost sneaky-type way. There hasn't been one, has there been one town hall meeting at a bigger place than this, properly advertised, so all the township taxpayers, or the ones that really want to know, can hear it from you people instead of me coming up here to pry it out of you? Because this is another meeting, not one mention was made about the building.
No, okay. Last November 10th, we had the meeting.
Okay, nearly a year ago.
And this room was packed.
Okay. When is the next, when is the, when is the next, when is the town hall meeting? You only have to hold one meeting? And you justified to them that you're gonna build this new building?
We haven't, okay, Steve, we haven't made that decision yet.
Well, how can you have a town hall meeting without having a decision?
We made the decision to go forward with looking at this, and that's, that meets the requirements.
And there is no law for municipal budgets, when you go out to bond, two percent or not, where you have to put something out to the voters.
Well, all I could say
Let her talk, let her talk, please.
With schools, there are regulations with regards to placing questions out to the voters to vote, but not with municipal.
Okay. Well, that's another issue where the, uh, schools are gonna be two million dollars short next year, right, Mr. Mayor?
We haven't been told that.
Right?
We haven't been told that at all. Matter of fact, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of money. Let me put it this way.
So where's that money coming from?
You, you need to what? You need to go to the school board for that. I have no idea. All I know is that Monday, I have a meeting with the school board.
So then, it would go to you, and then you would tell us?
No, that's not our job.
No, no, it does exist.
I'm talking to the mayor.
No, no, no.
It's not our job to repeat.
Hold on. They, we have, we have a liaison meeting, okay? So we get, they're, you vote for them, you vote for us, okay? They're in charge of the schools, right?
Okay. So, let's just, uh-
The largest part of your tax bill is the schools. Okay? They vote on that. Okay? We don't have a say on that.
Okay.
Now, and then, but we try to work together with the schools. So we meet with them every so often to discuss certain things that, that we, that they want from us, we want from them, so that the, the town works a lot better.
But it's safe to say our taxes are gonna go up as a result of the school deficit?
You would, you got, you have to talk to them. I would suppose they would, but I can't say that for certainty. I don't know that for certainty. Until, they will announce that. That's up to them.
And then they'll tell you?
No, they'll tell, they'll tell the public.
Okay. So, our taxes just went up for health benefits. Our taxes may go up with the new police force. Our taxes are gonna go up because of the schools. And on top of it, our taxes are gonna go up with this new municipal complex that's gonna cost far more than fifty million dollars. If, if fifty million dollars, the interest will come to a hundred and twenty million, without the thirty-year of maintenance pay that we're gonna have to pay to private company, which is gonna be millions of more. So us taxpayers have got to look into the future and see that our taxes are gonna go up every single year, more than any other town around here, for the next thirty years. Is that a true statement?
No.
No? Then you tell me what's not true about it.
A lot of it.
Like what? You're saying that or not, taxes, if, if you go through with this municipal complex, that our taxes are not gonna go up every year for thirty years?
Your taxes are gonna go up every year, just based on contractual, on contractual obligations.
Regardless of what we do.
We can do nothing and your taxes are going up.
If you build a building, we build a new complex or not, it's, they're cutting it off.
Well, it, it, there's a big difference.
Let me ask you this. You're, you're, you're about my age. When have you ever seen taxes go down?
Never. But, they're gonna go up a lot more than what they've gone up.
Well, that's what we-
So for you to stand there and say, "Well, just eat it," because taxes go up every year.
I didn't say that.
I'm telling you, when-
That's why we are working on how to finance this thing, to maintain, to keep the taxes as low as possible.
There's no way. There's no way. Because you have zero money to put down, right? The township has no money. The township now, the way to get extra money sells off property that the township owns. And yet I hear stuff from the, from the committee, that we're working to the future. So when the future people come up there, they might not have any more land to sell off. Because you all are selling it all off, in order to, I guess, fund whatever you're funding. But apparently, none of this is being set aside for the new municipal complex. There's zero. You guys told me zero dollars. It's gonna be all borrowed, every penny, right?
We didn't do any of the finances yet. I've told you, we've said this.
Well, when, when are these things gonna happen? It's almost like the cart went in front of the horse, and now we're going backwards. When are we gonna have a town hall meeting? When are we gonna find out what you people wanna do? When?
Once we, once we get the numbers from Johnson Controls, then we can sit down, as a township committee, and look at what the engineers' report said, and what Johnson Controls said. And we'll, we'll have a discussion about it. The township committee will. And then we'll make a decision.
Well, I'll state once again, that company has had a lot of questionable things. They moved from the United States, and they are now a foreign co, uh, company, in order to save a hundred and fifty million dollars a year.
Yep.
So that's the type of people you're gonna bring in to build our new municipal complex, and they're gonna hold the mortgage for thirty years, and they're gonna provide the maintenance, that's gonna be like a timeshare that can go up every year, more and more and more. And every time our taxes go up, the following year, when the next percentage for paying for this building is incorporated into our base taxes, it's gonna be more and more and more, and it's gonna be a pyramid, where you're gonna force a lot of people to have to move out of this town, because we ain't gonna be able to afford to live here.
Okay, let me just say something. You keep bringing up the maintenance. Notice that we have choices with that. We can do our own maintenance, or bring them in. We, no decision's been made on this. This is what you don't understand.
Everything I've read is that Johnson Controls the property for thirty years.
They offer that. They offer the maintenance, they'll do the maintenance. We don't have to accept that.
So, wha, what's your position right now? Would you accept it? Because they're bumping the township employees out of their job.
No, who said that?
Well, who maintains the property here?
What's that? Our township employees.
Okay. So, who would maintain it at the new building?
We haven't decided that yet.
Okay, if you go with Johnson, then you are bumping the people off of what they normally do.
I just tell you, we, they, they give you a option, whether we can have them do the maintenance, or we can continue to do the maintenance ourselves.
That's the first I'm hearing that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure, I'm sure you went on their website and looked at it, and of course, they're pitching their, their own products. Okay? But we have met up, we've had the meetings with Johnson Controls.
When, when is the meeting?
When we had them, had them.
Okay.
Over, over the past-
Oh, I thought you got another meeting you gotta meet with. You're done meeting with Johnson?
No, we have another meeting.
There's no other company buying into it, because the public-private, uh, partnership rule talks about competitive bidding.
And there was.
And it's a law.
And there was.
So there, who else put in for it?
It was AST?
Yeah, AST.
AST put in for it.
Oh, okay.
So there were, there's two.
So there, there's two companies, okay.
And I decided to step out of it, for, because I had a conflict with AST, okay? And they, this committee, without me, they chose Johnson Controls. Plain and simple. Okay? Now, you've gone on their website, and they'll offer the maintenance agreements and everything else like that. We don't have to accept that. We questioned Johnson Controls, myself, Deputy Mayor Kennis, at a, 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 numerous times. We asked Veronica to send messages up, email, so that we get all those.
Alright.
So we have choices.
Okay. Um, how much did the engineers' report cost?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand dollars. And I think it was just a smokescreen, to tell you the truth. Just to try to convince people that it's better to just spend another fifteen to twenty million and go with a whole new, new building.
You can bring in your own professionals and do the same thing, and I'll let them tour the building and walk through the building and do the same thing.
It's a very good idea. I suggested that we form an advisory committee, made with maybe a committee person and some taxpayers, and let's go look around, because since the inception, when I found this out, I've been asking for, not an engineers' report, but what is wrong with this building, and what estimates they have to fix this building? But instead, there's nothing there, and I can't believe that. What is so wrong with this building? What's wrong with it?
Not building, it's not big enough.
It's not big enough.
Correct.
It's not big enough.
Mm-hmm.
How many-
You know what we have to do? This building was built in, what, sixty-eight?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine. Now, it's, you know, we got people down off of Route Nine. You got, they're a little spread out. We don't want that.
They're working in a township building, right?
We don't want that anymore.
You don't want that anymore. So we're gonna fit the bill of what you don't want anymore.
What's that?
They've already outgrown that building.
Well, we, we outgrown, we outgrown the police department, we outgrown this building and the other building.
I, I, I can't believe it, because I come to this building all the, not one person ever said, "Steve, it is so, so jammed up in here, I can't do my job." I, I have yet to see anybody but happy people in this building, and I had never heard about the roof leaking, the windows are bad, the HVAC or nothing. I, it's just like, I come here, I never hear none of this. And it's like, how many, how many employees work in this building right now? How many?
Thirty, in this building directly.
How many work at the one down by the museum?
About fifteen.
Fifteen? Forty-five people. Okay.
Don't forget the police that we're gonna bring in.
Well, that's kinda like a separate thing.
Yeah, and they-
That's a sep- you could, you could help them out. I say help them out. But here, just fix the damn building, and let's go, let's keep going forward, you know? We don't, it, it, it's not practical now, with the interest rates and with the cost of construction material, to come up with this when you have zero money. It just don't make, it's bad math. It's, it's very bad. And there's a lot of people that are gonna oppose this, but we gotta have a town hall, and you guys reveal what you're gonna do.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Kevin, let's get it over and done.
Kevin Flynn, Forked River. That's all you get. Um, the tax bills, what's going on with them?
Alright, so there was, uh, every agency that's part of your taxing agency has to put in a form, and the form at the school, um, had some errors on it, so it had to be corrected. So once that got corrected, it has to go to the Ocean County Board of Taxation, which holds a meeting and strikes the rate. So the rate was struck on July twenty-seventh. So now, once we have the rate struck, we send out the information to the printing company to print the bills, and we're stuck in a queue. So, um, most of Ocean County, um, and Burlington County are stuck in queues, waiting for when you're next in line to get the tax bills printed. The taxes are uploaded into the, um, database, so you can get them offline. You can come in and pay them now, if you'd like to. The grace period is extended, and I won't know until those bills go out in the street as to what the final grace period is. We were told maybe tomorrow, but I don't have much faith in that.
Okay. Um, next. The meeting last month, the whole entire meeting was not recorded on the TV.
School district does that.
Nope. When you, uh-
But there's no obligation to record any of our meetings on TV whatsoever. We're only required to do a voice recording, and it is all on the tape. If anybody wants copies of that, Mr. Leidl wasn't aware that, that we were coming back out to do something, so he went home for the evening.
Oh, 'cause you could've handled that a lot better, because everybody was here. You didn't have to go in the back. You could've just kept it going and continued the meeting, and he could've recorded it. And then everybody could've watched it on TV. Because what happened in that meeting was very unprofessional. To see someone on that dais start screaming, "Sit down." Because I'm speaking, because someone, because someone stood up and had to, was trying to ask a question before it got rolling, and, Tim, it was you, you yelled at Chris Reed.
Yes.
Several times to sit down. Very unprofessional.
Can I, can I explain why?
But you-
Let me explain why.
Go ahead.
Because he's not allowed to speak.
Okay, but you didn't have to yell at him. You were yelling, for the people that stayed, witnessed that, it was very unprofessional.
The first couple of times, I asked him to sit down, "Sit down, Mr. Reed, you're not allowed to speak. You're not allowed to speak, you're not allowed to speak." He defied me. I could, I could, but that's how it went.
Tim, unfortunately-
That's fine.
You have to keep your cool.
That's fine.
Whether, whether he gets under your skin or not, whether you like him or not, you have to keep your cool. If you can't keep your cool, then you should excuse yourself from the room, because it was very unprofessional.
Alright, thank you.
And next, uh, back to the fire. Peggy Sue, thank you for coming there and checking on all of us. Thank you. And then, you went above and beyond, stayed, and were giving out drinks and food to everybody that was there. The other thing is that the, uh, the, you did, Tim, you called Scott. Scott wasn't there. You should've called Dennis, because he was there.
Okay. That's, that's fine. I mean, Scott did not, Scott didn't offer his phone number up. He would've just talked for a part, ten minutes.
Veronica has it. You could've called Veronica.
Who?
Dennis's.
I don't know if I really do have that.
You, oh, you do, I'm sure you do. You could've called me, I would've gave it to you. Um, because Dennis was the, the, represents, the lead officer from the Fork River Fire Department.
Right.
And, and it, thank God, we don't have a lot of instances like that in town with-
Correct.
Uh, the last time there was multiple fatalities at a fire was in nineteen ninety-two in the Fork River House. And on top of that, the fire chief has his, the incident commander has got his hands full. He's worried about everybody there. Veronica, you should've came down, you should've helped, see what you could do for Jack. The, uh, the diffusing, the after-meeting that was set up by him, he's got enough on his plate, you're the employer, that should've been handled by you. He's worried about his men and everybody there. For the next couple of days, his head is probably ready to explode. And if you can help out the chief, or whoever it might be at the time of an incident like that, you need to help them out as best you can.
And I was dealing with the police chief, and the police chief was handling all of that and making arrangements for all that. And I do believe our police chaplains were the ones that did, did assist, um, the firefighters and the EMS, um, with some, I'm gonna use the word grief counseling.
Well, there was a meeting, uh, Thursday night. Had a, professionals came down to speak to everybody, because whether you realize it or not, there was a few guys that had some issues. And I can't blame them, because a few of them are fathers with young children.
Mm-hmm.
And it really hits home.
Yes.
But, we do this job because we love it. Unfortunately, that is the worst part of being a firefighter, is when someone loses their life.
Yes.
And we all think about it, how can we do something better? How could we have got, done something better to make that not happen? And we all take it home. But some of them took it home a little harder.
Yes. I can understand that. I certainly understand that.
But-
And I, I'll say this.
I, you, I heard Tuesday night, you said you weren't in town, but-
I got ten towns, seven o'clock, and I think I was on the phone by five after seven.
I heard you say it, but things need to happen sooner, and Peggy Sue was right down there.
Had I known about the meeting Thursday night, I probably would've called Jack and asked if I could show up. And I did not know about it.
But, in that case, you probably wouldn't have been able to attend, because they wanted the people that were involved with the incident.
That's fine.
You had dispatchers from the Ocean County Sheriff's Department that were there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it, and everybody that was involved. If you weren't there, they didn't want you sitting in a, in a room.
That's fine. I, I understand that. But if I had known about it, I would've called Jack and asked, "Do you want me to show up?" And if you said no, that's fine. I mean, I understand, you guys, you, you guys are all brothers. It's a brotherhood there, and you gotta mourn together. I understand that.
But some of them took it a lot harder than others.
Yes, they did. There's no question about it, and I would expect that.
So, if there's any way to, especially if it happens during the day. I mean, someone, you got, she's, Peggy Sue was right there.
Mm-hmm.
I get it, you were out of town, other people might've been working, she's, has the convenience that she's off for the summer.
I will tell you this, Kevin, had I been in town, I probably would've stopped over. But again, I gotta be careful with that, because you gotta understand something. The first text came in from Veronica, that there was a house fire. Five minutes later, I get a phone call from the Isbury Park Press. "Can you confirm there's a house fire in Lacy Township?" "Yeah." "Now, I'm not worried about it, you guys are trained and can handle that." I then get another text from Veronica about the tragedy, okay? And at the bottom of the text is, "We're not allowed to say anything, the prosecutor's office is handling it, okay?" Okay. The next thing I know, my phone's blowing up. You name anybody, any media outlet was on the phone with me, okay? I finally get the final numbers. I was, Veronica and I were back and forth, all day long. I finally get the final number, and I'm going, "Holy smokes. Four people and a baby. The mayor's gotta say something." But I couldn't. I was fighting, we were arguing with the prosecutor's office, to let me say something. So, so I'm trying to do it.
It would've meant more to the guys, for you, the committee, everybody that was around, to come down there and check on everybody that's there. You can say whatever you want, but it, it really hits home, when we see your support, that you're worried about us and everybody at the scene doing their job.
Trust, trust me, Kevin, if I, if I thought it would've helped, I would've been there. I did go, I did try to drive by, and there were three or four news cameras there. We were still under the orders from the prosecutor's office not to say anything. So if I get out of the car, and I know people that live over there, "Oh, there's Tim McDonald, the mayor." The next thing I know is I'm holding a press conference, and I didn't have all the facts at that point in time.
No, you don't. You all keep down no comment. And you walk right up, you walk right up to Jack, and you talk to him.
Well, I made the call-
That's what should've happened.
Okay. But you know what, Kevin, there's no manual on how to handle this.
Nope.
And I did, I did-
Deep down inside, your heart should've told you that's what you should've been doing.
I did, I did what I thought was right. And the last thing you want me to do is calling Jack while he trying, while you guys are trying to fight a fire and talk to him.
At that time, everything had, listen, it wasn't pretty in the beginning.
No, I guarantee it wasn't. I guarantee it wasn't. But I, I, I was not gonna call Jack, or, or the chief, or any of the, anybody.
After Peggy Sue didn't, wasn't there right in the beginning. She was there after things had settled down.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, listen, your support, you guys coming up there and checking on us means all the world. That you actually, that you care, I, you say you care about us, but showing your face at that scene would've been a thousand times more than just making a phone call.
Okay.
Don't let it happen again.
I appreciate the advice.
Don't let it happen again.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Back to the municipal building, has any deposits been made with Johnson Control or anything?
No.
About the property?
No, no money has been exchanged here.
Mr. Bednick, come on down.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Richard Bednick, Forked River. Um, first, I'd like to mention, I was pleased to hear about the ordinance consideration for the no-knock solicitation. Um, I get a lot of people coming, I'm home, as you know, I'm retired. Um, and a lot of people come to my door, some of them are extremely aggressive, beyond aggressive, especially these pest control places. I mean, I have, I've been dealing with something with like carpenter ants, so I have a contract with somebody. And this guy would just not leave me alone. I said to him, you know, I have a contract, why would I want to hire you, I'm doing this, blah, blah, blah. So anyhow, for a lot of us, we will appreciate that. So thank you for, um.
Excuse me, next time they come to your door, ask them to see the permit.
Yeah, right.
Serious, no, that's serious, and they're gonna get, then they just call the police.
Okay, very good. Uh, number two on my list is this, and this is just, you know, advice to the current government body. I think it's really important that you listen to what the public tells you. You all represent the people of this community. You actually receive a small stipend for doing the job that you do. I think when individuals come up here to speak about the issues that are affecting our town, that you're technically, as I mentioned this once before, like employees to the people of this community. And when we come to talk to you and we tell you things that we may not be happy with, or we are happy with, or whatever, it is very important that you listen to what individuals have to say. You have your own agenda for certain things maybe, but that may not be the, the temperature and heat of what the community feels. A lot of times when people are in political office, they have their own agendas, which don't necessarily represent that of the individuals that they represent. I'm just saying this because, you know, coming to the meetings and listening to different people talk and the things that they have to say, I mean, I get, some of us get the feeling that you're just not interested. And, uh, that could be very detrimental to this body to be able to function properly going forward in the future. The next thing I want to mention is this, um, it is about a five percent tax increase because I did go to the website and I downloaded my tax bill. Can you explain why this year, especially for the public, why it is so high? I mean, I believe this is the highest increase that I've had. And the new website that you just put up, there's, it doesn't give us the history. The old website that we had had the complete history from when I bought my property back in two thousand and five to now. It's no longer there, so when you want to go and look at how things have changed, it's not there anymore.
It's new software package, the old software package, um, is not supported the way we needed to be supported. Um, it's, so we went with, uh, the same company that does our finance package.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Both our tax and our finance now communicate, there was a lot of manual entries that we had to do with the old system. So now they, the budget and the tax communicate with each other, so that's why we upgraded.
Okay, so you're the, you know, the, the town administrator, and by the way, I admire the job that you've done, Veronica. There've been questions about the salary that you receive, I don't, quite frankly, I never have a problem with that. I understand the responsibilities of running a town like this. You've been very good at controlling the message over all these years. And I admire that because it takes.
We've talked before about that.
Yes, we have, yes, so I just wanted to go on, on the record saying that. But, um, so can you explain to me, I'm assuming that the health insurance costs have been, have increased majorly, correct?
Yes, they have.
All right, and what, can you give me the percentage on that?
I can give you the numbers. So the, the increase from last year, on sal, the biggest increases are salary and wages, went up a million dollars roughly. Our statutory expenditures pension went up about two hundred and thirty thousand and our health insurance went up about another million dollars.
Okay, but what is the percentage for the health insurance, can you give me overall?
Well, you could do the math, the, the health insurance in two thousand and two was approximately four point two million and in two thousand and twenty-three, it's five point three million.
Okay, now are you still with the state health benefits? Okay, so maybe you should do what, what I recommended to the schools, which was, you did.
And we are claims experience is so bad, I cannot get insured elsewhere, so I have no choice but to stay. The prices from private entities came in higher and, uh, we decided to stay.
Okay, so my other question is, um, so what about going back with the contracts that you have and renegotiating the benefit level that you have?
Okay, so our, um, several of our contracts expire at the end of this year.
Right.
So come the fall, we will be sitting down with those units and discussing various options and, you know, both sides will tell us that all options are on the table.
Well, I would hope so because the taxpayers are paying for it, um, you know, and a lot of these health plans, especially with the state are, well, to say the least, they're, you, you can't get this in corporate America or businesses anymore. I mean, let's face it, so they're getting so much better than the average person that is working in our town. And I think maybe the health plans that you should have should be more comparable to what businesses would be offering, uh, for, for the people who actually work here, the mass majority, and also pay the, pay the bills. I mean, this is, you know, are, the taxes going up, the high inflation that we're suffering from right now in our country. And I don't, you know, there, I don't see it going down because the core inflation in the period now that we're at, it's gonna be very difficult to be able to get the inflation levels lower. They've reached the point now and now we're gonna be stuck, you know, in this, in this range. So all of these things, you know, affect all of us. I mean, we have to buy gas, which is going back up again. We have, uh, our taxes going up, people's health insurance is going up, food going up, everything else. It's, it becomes, you know, extremely difficult. So looking out for the citizens who live in our town because, you know, I'm concerned about everybody because we all have to survive, these are a lot of issues when I talk to people and I talk to a lot of people, a lot of these people I don't even know. They see me on my walks every day and they stop me because they know I'm involved and I pay attention. So I ask that you seriously look at all that because, you know, it's important.
Yeah, with the state health benefits, and I know you're familiar with it because at one time you had worked in the system as well. You know, I can't just create my own plans. And the state of New Jersey has, um, developed some different plans and.
Right.
They've pushed a lot of the employees into it and our new hires also fall into that plan as well. And now that plan's become, um, almost as equal in price as the rich plans, as I'm gonna say, the ones with the very exclusive benefits because the claims experience went up in those plans. So it's, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't with this right now.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Bednick, can I ask a question? As you, as Frank just mentioned, you were once in the public employment system.
Correct.
What if your employer were to come to you and said, you know, Richard, we'd like you to renegotiate and we'd like to cut your pay?
I've had to do this, sir. My last position that I ran at the Calhoun Hubbard Library Corporation, I did have to go back.
Well, that was out of state, that was in New Jersey.
It doesn't matter, it's still the same type of a thing. When you are looking out for the whole big picture, you have to take your own personal self out of it. And that's the way a good administrator works, okay? Yes, so just so you understand. Um, on the other note too, I just want to mention, because this is a personal level and this is somebody who I've worked with over the years who passed away quite suddenly. Amanda Buren, um, who was also an activist in this community and someone who I was proud to call my friend, recently passed away at a very young age. And, um, she actually came up here and was speaking at a meeting not that long ago where, uh, we were talking about the new building complex and such. And I just wanted to go down on the record that, you know, we lost somebody who was a really good, wonderful, caring person. I mean, Amanda, I mean, she had three thousand five hundred Facebook friends. I mean, nobody, yeah, really, nobody had anything to say but positive things about her. And she is a real loss to our community on many levels. So Amanda, rest in peace in heaven. Good night, thank you.
Mr. Bednick, before you sit down, I just, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to you for the way you talked to Veronica because a lot of times people come up here and don't show great respect. And I appreciate you being respectful to her, thank you for that.
Veronica and I have a long history.
But, but I.
We do.
But we, but we see some interesting things over the years, you know, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And on, on just another note, your comment was that sometimes we have agendas. I want to tell you that I don't have an agenda, my agenda is for my town. I'm doing what I'm doing here personally. I'd, I mean, we don't, you know, I got voted in here to take my husband's place, right? I chose to continue to do it and hope that people would vote me back in because I feel like I'm here for a purpose. I'm to help my firemen, I'm to help my first aiders, I'm to help my police department. I'm, anything I can help to do, to create. When someone talks about how expensive it is for us to have, hire more police officers, you really need to know the program. We were down to thirty-nine offices for this town.
I'm not questioning that.
No, no, I know you didn't, I'm just expressing that you have to understand that. I don't know anybody on here that has an agenda, I'll just say that, but I'm gonna talk for myself at this moment. I don't have an agenda, my agenda is for my town, to help my town continue to be the lovely town that it is. Whether you like the traffic, whether you like the building going on, whatever it is, it's life, okay? We've all learned that it's life and we just have to get through it. So I'm here for the right reasons, not for the wrong reasons.
Okay, well, I just hope that when you consider this, that your main agenda should be listening to what the taxpayers of Lacy Township tell you.
And we do.
And that was the point that I was trying to make.
Right.
And I appreciate your comments and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
Elaine McGuire, Lenoka Harbor. Good evening, everyone. Um, I, I am here on behalf of the Lacy Historical Society, myself and residents of Lacy Township. This might be a really good night for me to do this or a really bad night for me to do this, so, I don't know, I could spin it any, any which way. Our schoolhouse museum, the building, was built in eighteen sixty-seven, donated by, um, land donated by David Stout Parker. And the town committed fifteen hundred dollars to build that schoolhouse. The residents complained, too much money, so they compromised and it was built for twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Yes, so, um, a year later, when it was built, the bell and the belfry rang and all the kids came in. And at that point, they realized they need it to be bigger. And, you know, a few years later, they added another room. That housed our schoolchildren from eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen, I believe the last class was in nineteen fifty-three. We had, um, residents like Claude Updike, Jeannie Wilbert Haynes, Mrs. Gray, I don't know if any of you all remember any of them, but, um, they taught our children and a lot of the children there have, their descendants are schoolchildren in our schools today. So why am I here? I could give you a history lesson of all of Lacy Township, but that's for another day. I spend a lot of time at the museum, a lot. I know the ins and outs of it more than my house. I know when the bats are flying, I know when this is leaking, I see the creeps in the floor and I don't see any ghosts. But what I do see is that this building needs tender loving care. It doesn't need a Band-Aid and let me tell you, the Department of Public Works, Rob and Taylor, I mean, fabulous. And all you people have been fabulous with the support, uh, to, with the support of the museum and the Lacy Historical Society. I'm concerned about it. Now, a couple of years ago, I went into VetWorks, um, because that was the bird warden house. And, um, I said, what's, I had them show me around, they said, well, the building's really in total disrepair, unsalvageable. And that was a couple of years ago. And I was like, well, that's a shame. What I don't want to happen is the same thing to, um, the schoolhouse museum. That building is our town's treasure. There's only one other building, public building older than that, and that's the Potter Church. And don't worry, I'm on Casey's butt on that too. So anyway, I know it's a, you know, things are tight, um, and, you know, I know you just sold the community center and the bird warden house and I'm not getting into that as a historian, I stay away, you people know best. But I do, I, I do think the museum needs more than a Band-Aid. And my proposal is to, I invite you all to come down and I will give you a tour with Rob or Taylor and we can see, you could climb up in the attic with me to see what's going on. And it's, maybe it's a small fix.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Has that site, the school building, the museum, has that been declared a historical site?
Uh, no, it has never been declared a historical society.
Have you applied to have it as a historical?
I cannot, it's a lot of paperwork and, you know, I'm too busy digging up bodies and stuff and, and everything.
I do, I do know that if we could get it as a historical site.
We get money.
There's lots of money out there for historical sites.
Okay, if I would, I would love to help somebody do that.
Well, Elaine, if you have the paperwork or if you show me where it is, I'll be more than happy to sit and maybe a group of us can take care of it.
Sure, and, and I know that there's grants to do that. I, I, I'm applying for grants to, you know, I apply for grants for our museum or whatever.
If we, we get declared a historical site, we'll fix it so it's almost brand new.
But in the meantime.
Yeah, I know, you know, my mom volunteers quite a bit too.
In the meantime, you need to come down and maybe you won't see what I see, unless I point, point it out to you.
Maybe a good person to take that little walk around with that developer head that you have there to see.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what you're, you know, you're just trying to fix one specific thing or just multiple?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm, uh, the whole build.
Are you there?
The building is.
When are you there?
I could be there anytime you want.
Actually tomorrow.
Uh, tomorrow, as long as it's during the day, because I should be a grandmother, new grandmother in about six hours. I'm wait, I'm waiting for the phone call, Mom.
Pick a time.
What's that pick time?
Pick a time.
All right, um, I got the kids to school, dog park, um, I could do ten, ten-thirty.
Ten o'clock.
And I would recommend that you have Taylor come down, Taylor is great.
Well, we might actually, we would, maybe Jeff and Jack.
Jeff, Jeff, I know Jeff. I only know them when I see them.
He oversees, he oversees, um, right now, he's the, uh, the M and R, he's with the M and R department.
Oh, okay, all right.
But we're gonna, we're gonna leave that to Rob as he also sends down.
Okay, you'll be there at, at ten o'clock too. And we could, you know, bring your shoes, we have to move some things, we have to get up into the attic. And, you know, some ideas that I, I can see that, you know, I could be wrong. I'm not really that often wrong, but I could be wrong. But I appreciate, and I will see you tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm making sure this is on my calendar, okay. Yes, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
Suzanne Snyder, seven twenty-six Radcliffe Road, Lenoka Harbor, New Jersey. I am here this evening on behalf of the veterans. I am deeply concerned and troubled to think our township is providing our veterans without needy charity services. Due to the recent sale of the home of the veterans' office, our vets will not have a place to turn in time of great need. All my, all four of my brothers have served their country, three in the United States Army, one in the Air Force. One of my brothers in particulars served as a paratrooper in the Hundred First Airborne. He was sent to Vietnam in nineteen sixty-six. At the age of eighteen, my brother Carl was shot down, sustaining leg trauma, which resulted in his leg, is losing his leg. How difficult it was for my parents to see that letter informing them of his injuries. In addition to losing his leg, he developed PTSD and alcoholism. My brother Carl died at the age of sixty. My husband Bernie Snyder is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, serving two tours in Vietnam. He too suffers physically and from PTSD. That suffering is felt by our entire family. My husband, regardless, regardless of his physical and mental pain, has for years turned his suffering in service for his fellow veterans. Some, some time ago, my husband was made aware that the building that was used for our veterans was no longer going to be exist. He was brokenhearted, he knows that these veterans need the service for guidance, direction, and where to turn for counseling, financial assistance, shelter, transportation, utilities, food, medical equipment, you name it. They provide the veterans and their families. For example, my husband, while volunteering at VetWork a few years ago, received a phone call from a wife of veteran crisis after her husband had passed away. He needed a place to, he, that husband needed a place to be buried. And they didn't even have the money to pay. Devastated by this woman's anguish and trauma, my husband, with much effort, found a funeral parlor who was willing to take that body and give this veteran a proper burial. This is just one example of what VetWork does. What would happen to our services were not available for our heroes. Our veterans have given everything, think about it, they give their lives, they give protection and sacrifice to give the future for our children. Their example of selflessness goes beyond norm. As we let Lacy Townships, are we going to let the services to our veterans just go to the wind? Can we expect our young to want to serve their country when in return, they will come back disrespected and forgotten? Please do not disregard these beautiful men and women who have given all to, so we can live in peace. Please give them a space in our township and in our hearts to serve our veterans. Before placing your head on your pillows tonight, please pray for the strength to do the right thing by our veterans. Provide them with a place to turn to for hope. God bless America and God bless our Americans and thank you so much for your time and compassion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Now, you're last, you're always last. You're last.
The closer. The closer. We'll close it up before it speaks.
Do you state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Donna Brophy, um, sixteen hundred Beach Boulevard.
We don't need your address, just your name.
Oh, sorry. Well, the reason I do give it is it's relating to why I'm here. And I've talked with you numerous times and I just wanted to say, you're always very, um, uh, kind and generous when you talk, as everyone in your township are. So I really wanted to just say that and thank everybody for that, your service. I spoke with Rob, I guess he's from Public Works, he did come out. It's about my, the grass, I'm sorry, get to the grass behind my house, um, partial, uh, my property and then township property and then the walkway and then the gabion. I stand here just to say that I, I am in favor of the grass being cut. When Rob, and I know it's a topic every year you hear, um, when Rob was out at the house, he was saying there are already people trying to prevent the cutting from occurring, um, in October. I have a video that came, that was a town meeting from November of twenty twenty. I moved into my house in August of twenty twenty and, um, came out last year in support of the grass being cut. In the video, Darlene and Tony, um, what's their last name, Kraus? Kraus. They were here and it sounded as, in, in the meeting, they were asking to, to take care of their own, the township property right behind their house. And it sounded by the discussion and listening to the meeting from November that it was being considered by the committee that each person could handle the township property. So if you wanted to have your grass cut, you could, or not be cut, say, please don't cut my grass and put out little signs. I don't know if anyone remembers that.
I remember, I, I was mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, vaguely remember, I went out there.
Steve went through all of that.
So I know you have the history.
So I don't remember what, what came with it.
Okay, so, so the problem, so are you, you're talking about the section that's owned by the township technically. We, we, while, and again, that there's, that people are very passionate about mowing the grass, not mowing the grass. And during certain times of the year, we are not allowed to mow the grass.
Sure.
So I can't turn it over to you as a resident who wants the grass mowed because then you're gonna, um, mow the grass because you want that section mowed. And then we're gonna get fines from the D E P.
Right.
So that's what happens. So we have to maintain it in accordance with our permit parameters that say you can't mow, I think it's from May to October or something like that, if I'm not mistaken. So I can't turn it over to you so that you can maintain it because unfortunately, it can't be maintained at this time of the year. And we're out there promptly that date in October to mow the grass.
No, you absolutely are, because I call and I.
And I know that there's been a lot of residents this year that have mowed the grass and we have sent out reminder notices through code. and we have sent out reminder notices through code enforcement that it can't be done.
Yeah.
Because the DEP, I mean, somebody contacts the DEP and they're on the phone with us immediately.
Yeah. And it's really interesting, because I know my neighbors on my end, we are in favor of, you know, we want the turtles.
Maintain.
But we want to have it maintained.
Right.
And it sounded like from the 2020 meeting that you were allowing it if the grasses were there with the sand. So I just didn't know.
The vegetation, I think some people had some planting, some rose bushes and some other vegetation that was there. And I know there were some problems that I think we went and clear cut it, I'm gonna say. And we were going to allow those people to put those items back and stuff like that. But again, it, those natural grass areas where the turtle garden is, we can't maintain that at this time of the year.
Sure.
So if those people, you know, were going to, and I guess encroach, I'm gonna use the word on township property with those rose bushes again and stuff like that, we had no objection to that.
Okay. And just two more things. Just on the gabion, those plants and those bushes every year get bigger and bigger. And the roots get fortified and stronger and stronger where we're losing the view from the ground level. So, you know, that's a concern.
Well, you can take a look at that. I don't think I have any restrictions on the gabion because of what's there.
We'll have to check the permit for sure.
Yeah, that was the intent, though, to let everything regrow. I mean, that's always the intent on the DEP permits is to, they want it back to its naturals. They can get it.
Right. And right now, the way the grass is growing, the holes for the turtles to climb through, they can't even find them.
Correct. You are 100% correct.
They're so overgrown. So, and I even have a little cage in my backyard covering where the turtles laid their eggs. So I am trying to work with, you know, the area. So, but that was it. I just wanted to say thank you so much. And I always appreciate all the support and your time and.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we, I don't notice if we've taken out a few benches.
I did notice that, yes.
So obviously, if the salt water is just corroding, and actually, those benches are rotting right off of their posts down there. It's amazing how fast that the salt air is corroding. We will be replacing them with something of a more hardier substance down there for the benches, just if you see the number there.
Yeah, because there were two behind each of the homes, right? I noticed now at the far end, there are two, but now the other ones, there's.
Yeah, we had to take them out because they were getting so rusted that somebody could get cut on them. But we are looking at something else that's gonna withhold up to the salt air down there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on back. Come on outside. We're going to actuarians, so you're the closer there, Barry.
Name is Ed Jarrett, here in Forkett River.
What's your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Ed Jarrett. And I'm right down the road from the last week or so.
Okay.
That's, I want to follow up on that because I was here last fall when we were talking about all that cutting. I mentioned it, and it's actually gotten to a point where I think, as you've just mentioned, DEP will not let us, DEP has the control. I'm here to seek, who do we speak to to get to the DEP? Because the turtles, we've had the most hatching of turtle eggs this year. They're all up and down. We've got like six, seven cages. And the only yard that got five of them is the one that still has a little of the original sand in it. So the mothers and the adults are coming over and they're trying to find opportunity. So we now have pictures of the one person's yard who had been mowed up to his line. They went over under his little fence, rope, and they actually laid this year. And we've got the cages. So we're working with John Winek, who does the turtle. And I mentioned, these wonderful signs down there that say, when we bought our house two years ago, I saw a little turtle sign. And I really don't understand why we're not mowing to save the turtles, because with working with John, who's really involved with the turtles, he says, they got nowhere to go. They are predator, they're gonna get eaten. They're not gonna get across the hot path. They don't have a place to go down into the marsh or any kind of grasses. So I would like to bring it to another level of saving the turtles at this point. We have the eggs. Now, we're all out there. We have Tupperware containers. There's five neighbors that just got their little Tupperware containers. We're gonna go out, catch all the little hatchlings. We've been told, take them down the road, put them in a marsh. So we're trying to find the first marsh we can find them. That's where we're gonna put all of our turtles. They have a 1 in 1,000 chance of any turtle, even if you put them in the marsh to survive. So.
Now, John being the knowledgeable.
John Winek.
Yeah, the knowledgeable one that comes to this. Would he be willing to meet with us? It's probably gonna be a thorough conversation with the state DEP.
He's willing to meet with me. He was trying to get names together for me to be able to connect with. But I think it really should be everyone, wildlife first, it should be everybody. Who do we gotta get to to get DEP to understand without, and I don't want to get the lagoons involved with the sand.
No, I think we just focus on the issue that you're talking about.
We need, we need sand for them to do their thing in. But at the same time, we want them to get over the gabion and get into grass. And that's what we were talking about, something more substantial than just, let's just keep watching these hatchlings and having to catch them. Because if we don't catch them, the seagulls are gonna get them. Or they're gonna burn on the cat.
Or that they're gonna.
Exactly.
Didn't we do in the gabion, didn't we put, there's turtle tunnels, as they call them in there?
Yeah, the turtle tunnels.
But what happens, since we can't mow the grass, the grass goes up in front of the turtle tunnel.
Yeah, they can't even get into turtle tunnels.
Like, this, I don't know, the scientists that.
It's like, it's like Nemo with the seagulls. They're gonna be like, me, 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 me. And when they come out of that tunnel, the little guys, they're not gonna make it. They're gonna fall into those rip rap and they're not gonna make it into the wall.
And I think if I can get the DEP to come out and we can walk the site, especially before we mow in October.
That'd be great.
Would be the timeframe to do that.
Right.
So we can see the failure of their permit regulations.
Right.
And they may, they would probably issue some kind of amendment to the permit that would allow us to do some kind of maintenance or something like that.
Because John's talking about if we could come up with a ramp that the little turtles could get over and into the grass. Like, let's get the grass down instead of these bushes and everything that are growing on one side.
Yeah.
So I just, comprehensive, I'm willing to get onto that, whatever committee we can develop, whatever sub, I'll talk with you direct.
Yeah, yeah, talk with you direct.
And we get the right people.
I'll reach out to the individual that signed the permit. She actually still works at the DEP.
All right.
And she, she had come out to the site several times as we were making application for that. So she's familiar with it. And I'll also see if we can get Britta from Save Barn at Bay to join us about that, because she was part of that process.
Saving the turtles. The only other point I have is we just had some poachers out there.
Oh, wow.
People with lights that were trying to poach the oysters are too small. But we did have a boat out there. A neighbor got it on film. And we've sent that to Captain Al Majewski.
Okay, we're familiar with him, yeah.
Yep. So we're trying to understand, we didn't realize they'd start poaching so early. They just put the eggs out. And they're just, they're small, so they can't poach them. But we are gonna have an active opportunity to try to figure out what we're gonna do to keep poachers out of those oysters. And that, again, is something that's part of this whole Save the Bay thing. So that will be coming up at their next meeting. We've gotta figure this out, because they have cameras out there. We gotta catch it. But the thing that I got on that was, we didn't have good lighting. Now, we've extended the hours in a park, which is a public park. But you guys do understand you have no lights out there. Somebody falls on that path.
And this is the year with the turtles, we're not allowed to have the lights, because the turtles will go towards the lights instead of going towards the wind, the water.
We can't win.
I know, you just can't.
No, you can't win. You can't win.
I'd hate to see the public property, somebody to trip on that path, or trip or do something. And then you got something where it's not lit properly, like a parking lot. So I'm just saying, I hope you understand the ramifications of not having lights at 10 o'clock at night. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Hold on, Barry. We're going to actuarians. Don't worry, Barry. We'll get to you.
Bob Sheckling, 1600 Beach. Listened to a lot of interesting things tonight and I learned a lot. And I want to, again, congratulate you guys, because it often seems like you're under attack.
Thank you.
And I understand how that can be, you know, trying. So one of the points that was made, he left now, I think, yeah, he left, was about communication and how if you can communicate better, people are less apt to communicate badly with you. So just making that little point. About the grass, you got these turtles. They're in the ground. They're not gonna be able to get through the gabion. There's big tree bushes, trees, whatever you wanna call them now, that have roots embedded in the gabion. And it does block our view. But it also keeps the turtles from, if they had to climb over it, because you can't get through the tubes because of all the grass. People can't pick up their dog crap because the grass is too tall. And the dogs go into the deeper grass and then it pretty much stays there. But at least it's not that bad, because the real problem is the goose poop, which is incredibly deep at times. So I just want to point all that out so that, you know, us people that have to live there every day, and the people that go, oh, we like the bees and we like the little flowers. And there's people planting flowers, throwing seeds, little flowers all over the place. There's old goofy ass flowers that weren't there three years ago. Three years ago, it was a cyclone fence. Now you can't even see it. So it's dramatically changing. We're trying our best. And we just want to have some direction. And we'd like to take some of these trees that are growing in the cyclone fence, the gabion, and rip them out. We don't need them there.
That's a conversation we can have with the DEP to make sure.
Right, right. Roddick will set that up and, I don't know if I'll be there or whatever. One of us will be here for that meeting, for sure.
That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
All right, come on in, closer. Motion to adjourn. Here comes the closer.
Barry Bender, South End of Town, whatever you wanna say. It's the South End of Town. Okay. Saturday, hope to see everybody who's sitting up there. I know I already spoke with you. Relay for Life, Veterans Park, if you are a survivor, know a survivor or a caregiver, et cetera, the Survivor Lunch starts at noon. You can walk right up. It's gonna be a lot of good stuff to eat. We got Chicken Town from Tom's River, Forkett River Butcher supplying food, pies in Bayville. We got all kinds of stuff. So it should be really nice Survivor Lunch. The opening ceremony starts at 2 o'clock. Hopefully, we see some of you guys there. That would be great. We go, as you know, those of you who have been involved, we go from 2 o'clock to 7:00 AM on Sunday. Nobody sleeps. There's entertainment all night. Hopefully, nobody, none of the neighbors, but we've already gone through that. This will be my 14th year doing Relay for Life. We missed two years because of COVID, but this was a tough one. We had a whole new committee this year. So we had to relearn a lot of things. We had advice from those before, but it's, 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 it's a lot of work. But like I said, a lot of entertainment. We're gonna be going all night long. Anybody out there, again, I want to reiterate, anybody watching out on TV land, if you're a survivor, you know a survivor, caregiver, et cetera, please let them know. Come on